Good evening, we are back from recess. Kelsey Dawson-Walden has been able to join us. The airline did bring her back in one piece. So, we will continue with our interviews.
Good evening, we're back. And it's my pleasure to announce our next candidate is Mrs. Lisa Sales-Adams. And she is the Assistant Superintendent for the St. Paul Public Schools.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Hi, nice to see you again.
Well, thank you for coming this evening. I just wanted to go over a couple of ground rules. We have forty-five minutes and we have fourteen questions. I'll keep time and try to keep us on track and give you some guideposts so we go through. I will start with the first and finish with the last. So, we'll get started. Each of the board members will ask questions as we go through. So, first question, Lisa. Please describe your professional experience and training and how is that, how it has prepared you for this position? Tell us specifically why you are interested in being the superintendent for Oseo Area Schools.
Okay, first I want to start by thanking the board for the opportunity to be here to interview and to thank the public and the community for joining us tonight. My name is Lisa Sales-Adams and I come to you with more than twenty years of experience in public education, working in large urban and suburban districts. I've worked in the state of Minnesota as well as the state of Georgia. I've had the unique opportunity to serve as a principal at the elementary, middle, high school level, and I've also served as an alternative principal, which I think gives me a unique perspective of how schools run and looking at the continuum. I currently am Assistant Superintendent in St. Paul Public Schools. I've been in that role for five years. So, I supervise seventeen schools. I'm responsible for about eleven thousand students, eight hundred and eighty staff, and a budget in excess of sixty-nine million dollars, which is kind of the size of most smaller school districts in the state. I currently work collaboratively on the superintendent's executive leadership, excuse me, on the superintendent's leadership team. I'm leading some major redesign in our district on our strategic plan. We are currently working at redesigning our middle schools. We have actually had an opportunity to reinvest dollars into our middle schools. And the new plan is in alignment with the Association of Middle Level Education to ensure that our students have the best education that they can have at our middle level. I sit on our district's district equity leadership team. Done a lot of strategic planning, a lot of systems change, systems thinking. I'm a strong racial equity leader in our district, ensuring that we have strong and equitable systems for all students. I'm also an ed, I was an ad hoc member on the Reimagine Minnesota Commission, which is actually a collaboration of about seventeen superintendents across the state and educational leaders, working to really get a good look at and a good handle on creating strong systems for our students in the state of Minnesota. And one thing I'd also like to add, and I should have started with that, but I'm also a member of the community and a proud parent of two Oseo graduates.
Thank you.
Describe your skills in strategic and long-range planning. How would you work with stakeholders to implement our district's strategic plan? Describe your process to review and update the plan over time.
Okay, I think one of the strengths that I have is strategic planning and being a systems thinker, but I have been involved in our district's strategic planning efforts for the past year and a half. And I've taken a concerted and strong leadership role in a big portion of our strategic plan, which is looking at resource allocation and systems alignment. And that's where the redesign of the middle school model comes into place and making sure that in our district, because we have seventy-four hundred students that are in our middle schools, so we have a few configurations. We have K eights, six eights, and six twelve, so making sure that those students have an aligned experience regardless of their zip code. I understand the importance of looking at our data, seeking input from our community, from our staff, and from our stakeholders, really looking at what we've done successfully in the past and then what do we need to do moving forward to meet those long-range student outcomes, but also making sure that those goals are aligned with our mission and vision of the strategic plan. I have experience in going out to the community and seeking input from our partners, which is important because that's a big part of what we do, as well as really creating a blueprint. So, what I did this summer is I worked collaboratively, leading a team of staff in our district to really create a comprehensive and expansive blueprint for our system that we are now actually ready to launch. So, we are now in the process of creating a communications plan, aligning professional development, as well as getting ready to hire staff and apply resources and budget to support this strategic plan. I am okay at hearing feedback that is constructive. I really want to hear that so I can have the right information to bring back to our team so we can go forward and do the work that we need on behalf of all students.
Thank you. Thank you. How would you develop a 21st century educational vision for our district and lead us to higher achievement and greater success for each student?
I think the first thing when we're looking at developing a 21st century educational vision is to look at where we've been. I think that's very important to look at where we've been, what we're doing well, but also take a really strong look at what do we need to do differently for all the communities that we serve. So, Oseo serves a variety of communities in the metro area, and it's important that we get feedback from our stakeholders, but also our staff. We want to make sure that our district is a destination place where our staff are very proud and they want to be here and they feel supported, but more than anything that all of our students have the skills that they need once they leave us so they can be successful and that we are not determining what their outcome in life is. They actually get a chance to pick that, making sure that we listen to the voices of our parents. So, for example, with the work of Reimagine Minnesota, there was a lot of engagement that happened with our communities that oftentimes maybe their voice isn't always heard. It's important to look back at that information, but also to look at the information from all of our families. Where do we want to go? Where do we see ourselves in five years? And then how do we incrementally get there? And then how do we align our budget, our time, our resources, and our talents? And of course, I look for direction from the board. What are you all looking at, looking for? What are you envisioning? And how do we get there together? And how do we provide that direction to our staff and the supports to our students?
Thank you. You are the superintendent of Oseo Area Schools and the district needs to reduce its budget by three percent. Describe to us how you would lead the district in this process. What are the crucial components of this process, of your process?
I think the first thing, because I've actually been in this system where we've made budget cuts for the past five years, so it's been very tough, but the most important thing is making sure that those budget cuts do not impact the quality of education that our students receive. So, looking at our mission, looking at our vision, looking at our strategic plan, and looking at our collective commitments will be the first thing that I think that we should do, but we should also look at where our long-term outcomes are because our budget should support where we are going and what we are trying to do for our students. It'd be a perfect time to kind of look at the stop, start, and sustain piece. So, what are some of the programs that we have done for a long time that may not be yielding the results that we need? And oftentimes when we have budget cuts, those are really trying times. They're very sensitive times, but how do we approach that in a respectful manner? But also getting ideas from our stakeholders, our internal stakeholders, our external stakeholders, talking to our district leaders, our department leaders, our principals, our teachers. Where can we make those cuts? How do we really clearly communicate? Because I think if we do not communicate, people fill in the narrative, but also talking about why we need the budget cuts and why it's important to be viable with our budget and making sure that we are financially responsible with the resources that we have.
Thank you. What do you believe standardized test scores tell us and don't tell us about a school district? And what are some examples of successful strategies you have implemented to address the achievement gap in your previous roles?
Well, I think that standardized test scores tell us about a point in time. So, it's one point in time when our students are assessed, but it also does assess the standards. It assesses what has been taught, but some things that it leaves out, it leaves out all of the growth that students make on an individual day. It doesn't really talk about all of the hard work that our teachers put into play in planning those lessons, differentiating their instruction. When we look at a traditional classroom of thirty, there might be thirty different students at thirty different levels and all the time and attention and hard work it takes to put pieces in place to make sure that our students have what they need. I think with the standardized testing, it allows us to disaggregate where we are, how students are learning, how they're learning by student groups, and it's very important information. What I talk to my principals about is it's a point in time that assesses learning after it has occurred. So, it's important to use it as a checkpoint to see how students have learned the prior year, but it also gives us an opportunity to use that information to do some strategic planning with our school improvement plan, to dig in deeper and to provide the quality instruction and resources that our students need to do better, but it also allows us to look at our disparities. Where do we need to do better and how do we need to accelerate and support our students? One of the pieces with strategies to implement and address the achievement gap in my previous role, so I can talk to you about this current role, we are really doing a targeted effort for literacy for our students. So, we have an aligned literacy program K through eight in our schools, which is balanced literacy. So, we have aligned targeted professional development for our teachers, for our principals, and for our instructional coaches, making sure that everyone is on the same page. We have purchased resources that our students need so they can do, they can get the education that they need. We actually have targeted small group instruction, differentiated instruction, also assessments. And with the assessments that we're using, they're formal assessments. So, we have a benchmark assessment, and then we have assessments that teachers use to pre-assess how students are doing before a unit, but also to assess as learning is going on. So, we don't learn after the end of learning that the students have missed it. So, it allows us to go back and check and do better and to make sure that we are moving our students along as they should be.
Oh, sorry, that's me. What is your experience in planning for a growing district and meeting the programming and facility needs, including the consideration of boundary changes?
Okay, so my experience in planning for a growing district is really looking at the demographics. So, we act, I can talk about an experience that we currently have right now. So, I am leading a district-wide design team for growth and enrollment in our middle schools. So, what we have done over the past few years is we've looked at our data, we've looked at the demographics from the demographer, we've worked with REA to kind of look at where the growth is happening, and we also had introspective look of where we would need to build or purchase a facility. So, what we ended up doing is we took a look at where we would buy places, but we ended up purchasing a place in Woodbury. It's outside of our city limit, but it was an intra-district school, so a perfect place. But we looked at what type of programming that our families would need and would want, what type of program that our students would want. We're looking at how we're communicating, getting the word out, being aligned on how this school is going to meet the needs of our students. So, that's an example. But then I'd like to go a little deeper for this example as it pertains to Oseo. And I think it's important that we're communicating with our community about why and where we might need to build these facilities. Does it make sense in some geographical area? And if so, how are we going to look at that information? Looking at our current facilities, so we are also, I have experience with long-term facility master planning. That's a big part of what we're doing right now and involving our communities in redesigning the spaces for their students and their families. And when I say community, I mean teachers are involved, principals are involved, parents are involved, and how we can create innovative spaces for our students to be successful and really learn in a 21st century learning environment, but also navigating those tough conversations of, sometimes people look at the allocation of resources and they feel like that's a judgment on you or a judgment on that community. So, how do we really make sure that actually that's not what we're doing, but bringing in multiple perspectives so we can all be on the same page, but having a clear communication plan as well?
Thank you. Please describe your past work implementing vocational and other skills-based programs.
So, for with the past experience implementing vocational and skill-based programs, I'll go back to my experience as an alternative high school principal. And in that setting, we had an opportunity to forge a relationship with Minneapolis Community Technical College, and we actually brought in a PSCO program into our school for our students so they could actually get credits for college before they graduated, have access to a college campus, broaden their horizons about where they can and may be able to go as young adults, but also really working collaboratively to plan curriculum. In our current system, we have quite a few different programs. So, we have college in the schools. We have a nice relationship with St. Paul Technical College where our students are accessing college curriculum. And oftentimes, some of our students are graduating with advanced, with college, or community college degrees before they leave us, but also building partnerships so our students can have access to college and career technical courses. How do we really make sure that our students are getting exposed to and aware of the careers that are ahead of them before they even graduate? And then I did want to go back to one question about boundary changes. I will say that boundary changes can really, really be sensitive, but how are we really using our resources to look at how we're going to change those boundaries and how are we making sure that families have access to what they need, but they feel that their children are safe and they're still a part of their community? I just wanted to add that piece. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are through half the questions and we are doing very well on time, so.
Discuss a time when you made a decision that you would have done, would now have done differently. What would you have done differently? What did you learn?
I think one of the things that I would have done differently is in my role as Assistant Superintendent, but I have the unique opportunity to lead a cross-functional and collaborative team of school improvement specialists across the district. And what we do is we offer multi-tiered systems of support to our schools that need the additional resources. And I had a school that was experiencing some troubles as we transitioned from junior high to the middle school model. We just had a lot of systems change and that school needed a little more resources than some of our other schools. And what I initially started off doing is wanting to come in and really offer a lot of assistance. So, what our team did is we had different specialists or teachers on special assignment that actually went into the schools and provided the principal and the leadership team with a lot of recommendations, which actually became a little overwhelming. So, what we actually ended up doing is kind of backtracking a little bit, looking at the school's, school improvement plan, looking at their data, finding out exactly where do we really need to start, getting more input from the principal and the leadership team. What do you really need? How can we really come in and support your leadership team and your teachers in doing the work that's needed? We provided a targeted, job-embedded professional development plan where teams actually came together and they learned different skills that they needed to bring into the classroom to support students. We helped teachers look at their data, and that data allowed them to track progress along the way. But we also had check-in points. So, we celebrated when the schools were making success. We did some tweaking if we needed to go back, but we really actually had the school really take ownership because it was not as much as us providing the support, but as empowering our building leaders and our teachers to do the work. And with that, one of the takeaways is that we really looked at our team and we leveraged the talent on our team. So, on that team, I had a literacy specialist, a math specialist, a science specialist. We had a ELL teacher, a special ed teacher, and what we did is we looked at what the school needed and we decided how teams and our, how people in our team could leverage their talent and resources and go back and work collaboratively. For example, with our literacy model, we have co-teaching in our district. And what we did is we decided to have the special ed teacher, the reading teacher, and the ELL teacher plan the lessons together. And then when the teachers came in, we had all those teachers at the table learning at the same time because they're actually going into the classroom helping the same students. And what that did is that it increased their instructional leadership capacity, but it also increased their efficacy. I think they felt really good about the work that they've done. And I am proud to say, as a result of that new model, we call it kind of a success plan model, that school was able to get what they needed. I think the school gained the confidence that they needed, but the team got the skills that they needed to dig in and do the work themselves, but they knew that they could, that they could reach out and ask us for any type of aligned support that was needed.
Okay. Please describe strategies that you have used to seek the perspectives of multiple stakeholders, specifically, address how you did or would ensure that you hear the voices of families of color, English learners, and the LGBTQ, excuse me, LGBTQ community.
Okay, I think I'd like to give two examples. The first example that I will use is the work with Reimagine Minnesota. I was very fortunate to be a part of that effort, but to really come together with different metro area districts to really look at and work on an issue that is something that's near and dear to all of our districts, but some things that we need to do better. And through that work, really sitting down and really gathering data from the districts first, from the leaders first to find out, you know, we really need to get together to find out how we should reorganize and plan a course of action for ourselves, but we couldn't do that alone. So, we were a part of the World Cafes. And with the World Cafes, it was an opportunity for several districts to come together, but also to bring parents together from various schools, various backgrounds, various communities, and really look at where we are, what is actually happening, listening to those tough conversations and getting that feedback. But we also had students at the table as well. What are we missing? What do we need to, need to do better? And how do we need to create that environment where every student and every family feels valued and they have what they need? But not only getting that information, because oftentimes we might get information from families, but we don't do anything with it. But really to go back and do something with that data is important. But I also had the opportunity to participate in the World Cafe as a parent. So, my husband and I actually went to a World Cafe and we sat down and the conversation was facilitated by a student. And one of the equity leaders in Oseo, but just to kind of hear that passion, but to put my ideas on the table as a parent was really helpful as well. So, that's one example, but also the collective plans that our schools have now leading forth with Reimagine Minnesota, but also my work in the district, having different listening sessions, working with parents, surveying students, having focus groups, really getting an idea of where are we doing well, but what do we need to do differently? Because there are things where we have to get better, but also listen to the advice that we are hearing and the experiences from our students, having, listening to families at public comment at board meetings, you know, going back and really reorganizing right away, but also working with our partner, community partners, to work with parents to get an idea of what, what are we missing? What can we do better? But we also, we have, actually have a equity policy in our district and an inclusion policy that we work collaboratively to adhere to and enforce and making sure that we are putting those practices in place in our schools and across our district.
Thank you. Thank you. How have you, how have you managed a relationship between the school board and superintendent? And what are the roles of each? What did you like or dislike? Did you make changes in this relationship while in your district?
Okay, I think that I've had an opportunity to have very positive relationships with our school board members, having the, the type of relationship where they can call me up and tell me about a constituent that they've spoken to and trying to get a little more information. In the role that I have right now, it's a lot of problem solving. So, oftentimes, our parents will talk to board members and give recommendations or share some next steps, but really getting that information, connecting back with the parent, finding out what do we need, need to do different, talking with the principal, and then closing that loop. So, that's something that I have experience with. I have experience with onboarding, small group work sessions, but also really working in a collaborative manner with our school boards. I think it's important in the role of a superintendent and school board relationship that it's respectful, it's collegial, it's built on trust, and we are working in the same direction to meet the goals and the mission and the vision and the collective commitments of the district. I just want to make sure I'm answering all of that question. If I had to talk about a dislike, I think the only thing would just, it's not even a dislike, but I think it's important to have the conversation and to actually have people ask questions because I think once you seek information and ask questions, you get to a better understanding. And there may be opportunities where everyone doesn't agree, but I know that one thing that we agree on is meeting the best needs of our students in our communities that we serve. So, I think that's really important. And I think the only change that I've made in my role is really making the concerted effort to seek out board members and to share information and to give them a heads-up. So, for instance, with our new middle school, just making sure that they're kept in the loop, letting them know the progress that we have along the way, as well as letting them know how our strategic plan is going and how it fits into the, the big mission of our district.
Thank you. How do you ensure that the district recruits, hires, and motivates the finest educators? How do you recruit employees of colors and employees who are racially conscious for all positions in the district?
All right, so for example, I'd like to use an example right now. So, I had an opportunity to assist in the redesign of our hiring model for our principals and assistant principals. So, that happened last year, and I think it was an equitable, equitable process. It allowed us to really develop a candidate profile and really looking at that candidate profile that will lead to long-term student outcomes. So, what type of leaders are we looking for to lead and build strong schools in our community? But then, because I hired seven principals last year, so we also engaged and involved parents on the interview panel. We took questions from the school community, questions from parents, we took their feedback, and that was highly considered, but we also surveyed the school community. What are you looking for in the next leader? So, that was really helpful. But also making sure that when we are hiring our teachers, that we are really clear about who we are as a district, who we serve, and where we're trying to go, but also making sure that we create an environment that is supportive of all staff. I think that's important and really having a school environment where staff want to be, we're a destination district, and that our principals, our teachers, and all of our staff feel supported. That's important. We really want to make sure that we have a school community where our staff wants to be, but also spread the word. I think one of the biggest testaments to a district is when our staff go and recruit on their own. But I also have experience in working collaboratively to really diversify our teacher population. So, I work closely with our human resources department to look at increasing our teachers of color, and one of the targeted areas that we looked at were our African-American teachers. So, we actually worked with our historically black colleges and universities. In Georgia, we created a recruiting trip and developed a relationship with three colleges and an organization in that state, and we actually interviewed in that area. So, oftentimes, if we feel that our candidates are not coming to us, how do we get out there and get to our candidates? But I will say that it's very important to have an environment that will welcome and retain our staff when they get here because that's also very important because we want to make sure that our environments are inclusive, they're supportive, and they're welcoming. So, those are a few things that we've done, but also working with our principals to really make sure that our teaching staff and our other faculty reflect the students in our buildings. It's important for our staff and our students to see folks that look like them. So, those are things that I've been committed to as a principal and as a district administrator, and something that I want to continue to be committed to. But I also spoke on a panel at Minneapolis Community College about two years ago about the importance of diversifying the workforce and how can we create a coalition to make that happen?
Thank you. Me again, okay. How would you handle decisions that are unpopular with the public but educationally and/or financially necessary? Please give an example.
So, I'll start off with saying communication is key, but I'll use an example from my previous experience. A few years ago, we had to go undergo some significant budget cuts. And this took place after we were well into our second year of our middle school redesign. So, our schedules were set, people knew what they were doing, kids were well into our classes, but we actually had to do a cut with our schedule. So, we went from a seven-period day where our students had seven classes a day to a six-period day. And what that meant was that it was a reduction in our elective offerings and sometimes a reduction in our support classes. And this message came at a time where we actually had already completed our master schedules. We had worked with students and they had their schedules set for the upcoming school year. So, that was a huge impact. But the other impact is that it was going to reduce the opportunity to have job-embedded POCs during the day or professional learning communities and professional development. So, it was, it was an opportunity to really stop, look at our resources, kind of getting back to that question about cutting three percent from the budget, but doing it in the best interest of making sure that we, I want to make sure I'm using the right language, are meeting the academic needs of our students. So, what we ended up doing is working collaboratively, or what I ended up doing is working collaboratively with our district schedulers to make sure that our principals in our schools had the information that they needed to redesign their schedule and to ensure that our students were not impacted and they would, they would have access to all the MDE required courses. That was the first thing that we did. Worked with team and resources to talk about the Worked with human resources to talk about the impacted staff. Because with the reduction in classes offered per day, that's a reduction in staffing to make sure that our staff that were affected would get to have jobs in other schools. But also working with our community, delivering that message to our parents. And our schools surveyed our parents in their school communities and asked them for feedback and input on the elective courses that were most important to their children. So we wanted to make sure that if we were going to make a reduction or a cut, that we certainly stayed within those courses that our students and parents really valued. We also worked with our principals to have aligned communication to their parents and to their staff. Wanted to make sure that we were saying the same message. So that message went out to our families and we made sure that was translated in the languages that our families received information. We also made sure that we had clear talking points to our teachers, because oftentimes our teachers were the ones that were communicating messages to our families. We rescheduled our students and then we also allocated funding for schedulers that had to stay in the summer and fix the schedules. And I will say with the clear and consistent communication, although the decision was tough, we were able to get ourselves aligned, get ourselves together. And we started off in the fall, school started off with a hitch. But what's nice with our new redesign work with our strategic plan, we get to kind of go back to some of the things that we lost.
Thank you. So please explain how you would go about setting a strategy to capture a higher percentage of eligible, eligible students who live in our district, but do not attend District 279 schools?
Well, I would like to create a strategy that would allow us to have access to some of our, to our families that live in our boundary areas, but attend school in other places. Get an idea of what exactly are you looking for? How can Oseo be that destination district that you want your families to attend? I'd want to look at our programming to see if our programming are meeting the needs of our students and our families. Making sure that we have safe schools, that's important. Highly trained staff, making sure that our staff feel supported and they are singing the praises of the district. Because of course you want to have a district where our staff feel comfortable, they feel welcome and they feel supported. That's very important. But also getting out to the community. How can we recapture some of those families? But how can our community share the good news of what's happening in the district? I mean, we're one entity, but we have over 21,000 students in this district and many families that can really talk about what Oseo has to offer. But also how do we get out, out there and tell our own message? Because oftentimes other people tell the messages for us, we should tell our own story. What does that story entail? Making sure that we have good quality schools at the elementary, middle and high school level, looking at our graduation rate, looking at our college access rate. What are some other things that we can do to make sure that our facilities are state-of-the-art? So looking at the long-term facilities master plan are really hitting on those areas that we need to, to make our schools innovative, to meet the needs of our students. But also making sure that it is aligned with our strategic plan and our core values and the mission and that we are really looking at our budget and our budget is in alignment with what we say that we're going to do.
All right, thank you. We're at our last question, which is more of a statement from you and we have more than 10 minutes left. So you have plenty of time to, to go through that. So the question is, is there anything else that you would like for us to know about you as we consider your candidacy for the superintendent of Oseo area schools?
Yes, I would like you to know that this is an ideal position for me. As a member of the community and a parent of Oseo area schools, I've had an opportunity just to see the joy, the pride and the commitment that staff have to this district. I've watched countless board meetings and listened to work sessions where staff have come and really shared the quality work that they're doing and to hear the pride that they have and the love for their students. Looking at the work that Oseo is doing is, it kind of mirrors some of the work that we've done in St. Paul Public Schools. So I think that I can bring some of those experiences that I've had in my previous district to continue the work with culturally relevant teaching, with the clear model that you are using with your staff, so it's very clear about what they are doing in the classroom, giving teachers the tools and strategies that they need to connect with their students, working with our principals, with the principals so they can feel supported. One of the things that I really enjoy doing is growing and supporting leaders. I would love to bring that here. I am someone who is adaptive, I like to work collaboratively. I do have high expectations, but I think that I should and, and I want you to have high expectations of myself. I'm data-driven, but I just have a passion for students. So if you were to stop and ask anyone who has worked for me, worked with me or for me in the past, they will always tell you that Lisa puts students at the center of anything and everything and that's all students. So I want to bring that passion, that commitment. But also I'm a strategic thinker, I'm reflective, I'm a lifelong learner. I'm a doctoral student right now at Mankato State University. And what I'm researching through my studies is what are the high-leverage leadership practices that our principals bring that yield high academic achievement for students of color, especially African-American students. So I want to bring those skills and strategies here, because I would love to be a change maker in Minnesota that gets our state off of that negative disparities list. That's important. I'm committed and, and I just want to be a part of where Oseo is going. I think that the mission and vision are reflective of what I believe as an educator and as a parent and as a member of this community. And I want to show others all the quality things that this district can do, will do and they have been doing.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time this evening.
All right, do I get to ask questions or?
Not this time.
Yeah, we didn't have that set up for this, thank you.
Okay.
I know.
It's weird.
I know.
She went by herself?
I know. I gotta find the ballots.
Exactly. That's why I'm.
After one.
Hello.
Hi there.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Ryan Lager, who is superintendent of the Belle Plaine School District.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Good to see you again. Nice to see you again. Ryan. Good to see you.
Happy to report they downgraded the snow. After the last two weeks, I think we're all happy about it.
Yeah, right.
Well, Dr. Lager, thank you very much for meeting with us this evening and for braving the potential snowstorm. So, just want to give you an overview of what we're going to do. We're going to have 14 questions, 45 minutes. And the last question will be more of a statement from what, you know, to wrap up. But we're going to try to go through that. I'll keep time and try to keep everything on track.
Thank you.
So with that, let's start. Describe your professional experience in training and how it has prepared you for this position. Tell us specifically why you are interested in being the superintendent for Osseo area schools.
Yeah, I'm going to start with the second part of that, why I'm interested in the position, because I am extremely interested in the possibility of coming here. And, you know, I'll talk a little bit about my experience, but one of the things is, is I'm really looking for a district where my strengths align with things that I can help, what they're currently working on, come in and support, add to, be a positive contributor, take things that I've learned from being a part of those, and help implement, evaluate, and make sure we follow through and expand those, continuing to improve them. So when I spent time looking through your goals, you know, each student has a plan, is progressing towards that plan. You know, seven or eight years ago, we began the process, or I did in my career, of working on six-year planning with kids in a high school with 20, 250 kids, the 19th largest district in the state. We started in eighth grade where kids took an interest inventory. We then, they had a meeting every year with a guidance counselor where they developed that plan for years of high school, two years of proposed study. In that, we morphed into we provided a career fair for kids, because one of the things we learned is kids could be interested out of the survey information, but did they really know what the careers were like? So interesting story, we had a kid who wanted to go into actuary science, and he sat in a thing and listened to an actuary talk about what you did all day, and he came out and he looked at me and goes, "I do not want to sit in a cube and do numbers all day." And he ended up going to pursue being a patent attorney, because he listened to a patent attorney that day. And from then, one thing I've learned in being a part of Pathways programming, which I know you guys have as well, that I'm very passionate about, is that the end of Pathways, that there's that connection to community, that you create a schedule where there's an internship opportunity for kids to have, you know, a three-hour block in their day where they actually go out into industry and work in business to see what it's like on the ground. Because a lot of times I can think I'm interested based on what I know, or in many cases, a lot of our kids don't even know what the possibilities are, what they can pursue. And that, to me, is really, I talk a lot about unlocking kids' passion, that's really what we should be doing in K-12. So that goal really aligns with a lot of things that I'm very passionate about in my career. The second piece is contributing to community in a meaningful way. As a high school principal, we actually created a program where we offered a letter to kids who engaged in community service. So an athletic letter or an academic letter. We were actually looking for ways, we had a lot of conversation about how do we get kids more out in community and involved, create, because community connection, create positive community connections when we need to pass referendums and we need to do different things. Community has a better sense of what's happening in the school. So we set up a whole process where kids completed so many hours of community service, and we gave them a letter, a letter jacket, the whole thing, just as they would for athletics and everything else. That's something that I think has an incredibly positive contribution to school and community. So that was another piece where I have experience working with as well. And then also, just looking at the programming, I was a part of a team that brought International Baccalaureate to a high school I was at. It was a very good program for kids. The one piece of International Baccalaureate that I thought was really powerful was the standard level, high level option. It offered opportunities for kids to pursue more rigorous courses, but they didn't have to pursue the top-level rigorous course. We also was a part of a school that, twice actually, in two districts, where we implemented the Avid program, which is a very, when well-done, is an incredible opportunity for kids, especially if you have the advanced-level courses that you can connect those kids to as well. I was a part also of securing funds from the Kern Foundation and starting Project Lead the Way in a district I was in, which I think is another program that can even morph into something more. We created partnerships with local colleges and college in the schools that created, that Project Lead the Way was a little bit more of a box, it was very tight with what kids had to do. We created some more engineering experiences that would have been more geared towards two-year programming and connections with Havermin Manufacturing, J&amp;J Hill, and Sons and Mounds View, where kids, again, could get out into industry and work coming right out of our fabrication lab. So hopefully I have an opportunity to talk about those. But why I'm interested in Osseo is all of those opportunities. On top of it, I have, I said, years ago, I was an assistant basketball coach at Maple Grove, and then I was, I spent a majority of my career in the largest district in the state, in Okeanapin, just five miles north of Park Center. So very familiar with the community. Actually went sledding with my kids at Central Park in Brooklyn Park a few, was that last weekend? You know, so I'm very familiar with the community. Spent a lot of time at Elm Creek, went for a nice bike ride from Coon Rapids Dam out to Osseo High School. So I understand the area, I understand the community dynamics. And I actually, when I look at all the largest districts in the state, I see Osseo Maple Grove as one that's thriving, has a lot of great things going on, and would be a destination district for me. So that's what makes me excited to be here. Now I know I'm on a timer, so I gotta talk about my professional experience. I've had the luxury in my career of teaching at all three levels. I started as a fifth-grade elementary teacher, but yet I've spent the majority of my career in administration at secondary. But I was a fifth-grade elementary teacher, and during that time was early on when we created, I created a classroom webpage with my kids and just introduced them to HTML programming. I'd be embarrassed if any of you saw that today, because I had little school buses that drove across and little frogs that hopped on my, but the kids loved it. But I was also in the district technology, we were writing a tech plan for the district, and the middle school principal approached me about if I wanted to come and be a tech integration specialist and then teach eighth-grade technology courses. And I honestly thought it would be a great opportunity to go to middle level. My parents were both educators, my dad and mom both worked in a middle school, so following maybe in their footsteps, I wouldn't tell them that, but that's maybe what I was doing, to go and work with middle-level kids. Had a great experience there, a lot of opportunities. And then I had a great opportunity come my way where I had a chance to go be head boys' basketball coach at Champlin Park, which was a passion of mine, as well as be an audiovisual technology coordinator, which gave me a whole skill set. I always say I have enough skills that I can do, I can do enough things, like if the auditorium doesn't work, I can run the sound, I can run the lights, I can coach the basketball team, I can, I can play around in a lot of different areas in school, I can fix the phone systems, I can help with technology integration. So I've had a vast array of those kind of experiences, which I think have been very beneficial to me. But during my time there, we actually had some, we were on the AYP list in 10 of 20 categories, and I had led a process of North Central accreditation as a part of my internship experience to get my administrative license when I was at the middle school in Spring Lake Park. And so the high school principal came to me and said, "Hey, do you want to work on the school learning improvement team?" And I said, "Sure." So we put a group of people together, we looked at our data, and this was BSTs, we're classifying AYP at that time, so the Minnesota test of basic skills. And so we created some mini. And so, we created some mini reading camps, math camps, and what we did is we actually pulled kids out of electives who weren't on track to be proficient. And this was a really good learning experience for me around testing and data. I got a call that spring from district administration out of Boston, and this guy was like, "How did you guys do this? There's no high school of thirty-two hundred and fifty kids, there's no school like this around the country that's made this kind of turnaround." And I said, "Well, I really wish the intervention programming we did was what changed the, our scores and took us off the list." But what really had happened is we had created an apathetic attitude towards testing. And, you know, we had had teachers who had told kids, you know, "These tests really don't matter," and that's how kids approached them. And what happened was now, once kids lost their electives, they tried on the test, essentially is what changed. And, but that was the piece for me that was a realization of, if you're using testing and data and that one snapshot picture in time to make decisions about kids' academic futures, you need to be assured of the reliability, the validity, and the engagement of the kids. Because we don't want to be putting kids in low-level courses because they didn't maybe try on a test that maybe they didn't know was important. So, I, I'm not gonna say it's, testing plays a role and it is an important part of what we do, but we have to really understand what's the engagement, what's the reliability, what's the validity. So, we ended up going completely off the list. Then, I was actually on my way, incredibly exciting experience, and I was at a conference just here recently and interacting with an individual from Texas, and he had been at the same workshop I was at. It was a ten-day high school redesign workshop at Harvard. Unbelievable opportunity, and I'm ready to leave, and I get a call from Stillwater, one of the, the superintendent in Stillwater, and he said, "We just ran a process, we went through, and the candidate we had fell through, we don't have one, would you be interested in applying?" And I said, "Well, I'm gonna be gone for ten days, I don't know if you wanna wait that long, 'cause it's July." And he said, "No." So, we did a phone interview, I came back, interviewed for the job, and I accepted the high school principal job in Stillwater. At the time, the nineteenth largest district in the state. I say I know that because we were pins and needles whether we were gonna be able to keep alt facilities, it was between us and Duluth, whether we were gonna stay large enough that we'd be able to qualify for that, and we did. But spent five years there as a high school principal, great years, great school. And then, my fifth year, January, we had changed some positions from assistant superintendent to executive director. We had a position that didn't work out, superintendent, we had a really strong, my colleagues at the secondary, one of them was middle-level principal of the year in the state at that time, and he would tell you that the other middle-level principal was ten times as good as he was, so they were both really good. So, I say by default, they, I had a superintendent license, and the superintendent said, "Hey, would you like to take on these roles?" You know, or oversee curriculum and instruction, which is really a passion of mine, then administrative services, HR, operations, all of those pieces. So, January, I started doing some of that work, and then in, at the end of June of that year, I transitioned full-time into that, we hired a new high school principal. I did that for a couple of years, and then I was, you know, kinda got the itch to look to do the superintendency and had a couple of opportunities, and I ended up landing in Belle Plaine, which is a smaller district. But, you know, I really, I've spent the majority of my career in large districts. I'd been in Okeanupin, I'd been in Stillwater. And we just had this conversation, a superintendent meeting I was at a few weeks ago. The, what's been really powerful for me is when I was in a large district and you're overseeing transportation, you're always delegating to your, to the people who are doing it, you're trusting the conversation, but you really don't know all the questions to ask, 'cause you've never been at the ground, the grassroots level. And now, being at the grassroots level, I've negotiated transportation contracts, and, you know, as one of the things I've learned just this year is the fleet of buses makes a significant difference. Our bus company chose to buy four vans versus use a three-quarter-length bus that has a chairlift on it for students in wheelchairs. That's costing us about twenty thousand dollars more, but it's more advantageous for them, 'cause the vans are cheaper and more usable, but they have to run four routes every day, where they could run one. So, it was a great learning experience for me of being able to see at the grassroots level what the difference is. You know, I oversaw food service, and one of the things, we saved eighty thousand dollars in food services last year, just because of how we bill. So, it's those things of taking the large district experience of being able to delegate those experiences, but now, having gone to the small district and seeing it at the grassroots level, I don't have to do the work, but I have, I can ask a lot better questions now, because I know what's really happening at that level. So, in addition to that, I've negotiated two teacher contracts. We settled our last one in four days, or in four meetings, which I was happy for. When I came to the district, one of the things they really wanted to improve is the culture between the district office, the board, and the teaching staff. I feel we've made incredible progress in that. We, we had a day a week where they would all wear shirts, union shirts, I haven't seen those in a couple of years, and I think it's just the relationship and the things that we've been able to build there. And for me, that's probably one of the things I'm most proud of in the current situation I'm in. So, with that, I'm, there's, there's a ton of other pieces that fit into all that, and hopefully I'll have an opportunity to answer that tonight, but extremely excited to be here, and thank you.
All right, thank you.
Describe your skills in strategic and long-range planning. How would you work with stakeholders to implement our district's strategic plan? Describe, describe your process to review and update the plan over time.
Strategic planning, the one, the one thing that's become very important to me in this area is that your stakeholders understand what you're doing. A lot of times, you know, so I've been a part of three major strategic plans, some of those have had ninety to a hundred and some initiatives that are a part of them. And one of the things that I, that we've done now in my learning process through that, 'cause what I understood is the community really doesn't understand all of our lingo and all the things we're trying to do, and sometimes they look at that and they're just like, they don't understand, it's so robust. So, we've broken it down to looking at, what are the five, three to five things that we do really well? So, you know, we have personalized learning, we have early learning initiatives, we have quality instruction, we have student involvement and activities. And in each of those pieces, we explain, so you can go right to our website, see what those five things are, you can click on it, and you can see exactly what we're working on in personalized learning, exactly what we're doing in early learning initiatives and why we're doing that. And so, that's a breakdown on a smaller scale to what is a part of a larger plan. So, the larger strategic plan for, for me than working at the cabinet level or district level is, we take each of those areas and say, "Okay, what are the key areas for us right now? Is enrollment an issue? Do we need to be creating programming that's bringing kids to our district? And then, what are we gonna focus on here?" So, this is, becomes year-one task. So, once we get that and we get some enrollment, which obviously is gonna generate additional revenue, what becomes a year-two? What becomes a year-three? What becomes a year-four? So, you, you take the strategic plan and you have to, I don't wanna chunk it, for lack of a better word, into, when are you gonna move forward on these initiatives? And I always talk about the idea of there's the, the planning stage or the, the development stage, the piloting stage, the implementation stage, and the evaluation stage. Those are four key components that have to be a part of everything we do, because if there's one thing I think the public gets frustrated with in schools, is that we talk about a lot of things, but we don't really follow through on anything. And that was one of the things when we talked about really looking at, what are the five things we do well? I can tell you, you know, we have a one-to-one, we personalize instruction, we're, we're hopefully not using our fourth e-learning day tomorrow, 'cause that'll be the last one, but we've had three of them, and they have been excellent. Our attendance has been phenomenal, the work our kids have done, but we built our one-to-one, we restructured it around improving core instruction. So, we, honestly, we don't do a lot of work with our devices on really the creativity side and creation that we want. We are doing all of our kids' code, K-six for fifty minutes a week, that's kind of our creativity piece for them, but the rest of it really is focused around our balanced literacy curriculum, it's focused around our, improving our math instruction, it's focused around improving what we're doing in literacy and in science. It's really a core focus on those pieces, but that's that piece, but that's what our community understands, you know, there's a lot of other things behind that that are in a strategic plan, that are a part of that piece of it. So, that's kind of in a nutshell, you know, the long-range, short-range planning piece of it, but really making it so the public understands what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How would you develop a 21st-century educational vision for our district and lead us to higher achievement and greater success for each student?
Yeah, and this, you know, so there's a lot of components to this for me. You know, first of all, it's looking at, at where we are now. You know, obviously, closing the achievement gap is a significant thing that a lot of people talk about, but the one thing that I'll talk about in that is, is gap closure's one thing, if we get test scores that are the same is one piece. But when I get back to pathways or community connections, when I talk about 21st-century learning, it's about taking learning outside of the traditional school setting and connecting with business and industry. One of the really attractive things about Osseo is all of those opportunities that are here. There is tons of business and industry here, both in the four-year college education realm, in the two-year programming realm, and also in preparing kids to go directly to college. We're doing a lot of work right now around a portrait of a graduate. If we've done something that I think is, if we revisit that, or that maybe we need to revisit, is we had such a push for so long to push every kid to four-year college, and I think in some ways, we've actually made kids feel bad or feel less, because they wanna pursue a two-year degree. Or they wanna go to the workforce, or they wanna go to the military or things like that, and we've kind of downgraded that, where what we're really trying to do through 21st-century programming is, we're trying to, we're looking at those three areas. And actually, our next conversation is around, what are the, what are the three to five areas we wanna focus in, and kids moving right to the workforce, kids going to two- or four-year college, or to two-year college, and then kids going to four-year college. Now, within all of that, the other piece that's become very important to us in looking at 21st-century learning is mental health. People wanna know what's the biggest challenge facing public education today, and I was just with seventy superintendents last weekend from across the country. From New Hampshire to Oregon to Mississippi to Texas, mental health is the challenge. We're looking at rolling out, you know, our message right now is, we can give our kids the skills, we can give them the programming, if they're not mentally healthy, that's not gonna do any good. So, we're actually working on a comprehensive plan around mental health right now, and when we roll it out next year, it will have a daily component, we're in our advisory, five minutes in advisory, five minutes at the end of day, so ten minutes. We're gonna use a program called Move This World. It's facilitated through our devices. It's a really good educational piece that helps kids and talks them through questions about, with their, so teaches them about trauma, teaches about anxiety, teaches them about depression, and then there's activities that the kids do. The thing I love about it is it's driven by the device, so there's consistency in the delivery, because some of the questions even that they're asking, the kids will have the conversation, but not all teachers would maybe ask the question the same way, so I think that's gonna be a good piece. Then we have another level where we've added some additional counseling, which I think it's abs, great in your district, able to provide element, counselors elementary through, the opportunity to do programming, K-12 is outstanding because of that. But we're also, tomorrow, I, we'll have the final conversation, we're gonna add a full-time mental health therapist in our schools, 'cause one of the challenges we're seeing is kids have mental health needs, but we can't get them to the clinics. So, if we have that therapy, when I was in Stillwater, we had three people in our high school who ran a wellness center, and it was a great connection where kids had that connection right in school. So, we're gonna be doing that. So, the two components related to 21st-century and moving that piece forward is that we're preparing kids for four-year college, two-year programming, right for the workforce. And then, we're also taking care of the mental health needs that kids have, so they can be successful when they find that passion they wanna pursue, and then the programming that will take them there, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so you are the superintendent of Osseo area schools, and the district needs to reduce its budget by three percent. Describe to us how you would lead the district in this process, and then what are the crucial components of your process?
Yeah, I learned early on in my career that budget is significant. I was in a district that went into statutory operating debt. I've taught school finance and HR at the graduate level, and I follow a, a process everywhere I go, because it's been very successful to me. 'Cause you can't build the culture you want if you're in a mode of consistently cutting. You know, I was, I led a committee, had to cut ten million dollars one year, we already had class sizes in the upper thirties, our class sizes went into the forties at the secondary, we had class sizes in the upper thirties in fifth grade. It was just a very difficult time. The process that I use is I establish comparable districts. I actually walk our board through a retreat every summer on finance, where we look at all of the object codes, we look at all the subject codes, and we look at them in comparison to our comparison districts. Because it's one thing to look at your budget, but how do you compare to the people around you? So, you establish who those comparables are, and then in that budgeting process, you know, I work with my business manager very closely. We do a five-year trend analysis, so we set our budget based off of that, and like I've told our board, over five years, you know, board policy is we have a ten percent fund balance. Over five years, some years we're gonna win, some years we're gonna lose, and we have that conversation, because we also wanna keep class size. And we're, we have the fourth-best class size in the seven-county metro area right now. We just put, we just took our fund balance from seven, we brought it down to seven and a half, we're at over eleven now. So, it's over that, in year, that's the fourth year following the process, and we're still over that ten percent piece. But, so establish comparable districts, look where we are, 'cause that helps us identify, you know, are we spending too much in transportation, where are our contracts, where are our benefits? Where, we look through all of those U First codes. Then the second piece is establish that five-year trend analysis, and the third piece is one that I learned, oh, seven or eight years ago. It's really called academic return on investment, where we actually look at programs. So, we're going through and we're cutting ten million dollars, and I'll give you an example, we look at a reading program where we're getting seventeen percent growth, but it's costing us fifty-two hundred dollars a kid. You know, Horton-Gillingham, extremely expensive program, it's excellent. We had another program where we were getting about six percent growth, about five hundred and fifty dollars a kid. Now, we had to cut ten million dollars, we had to make a hard choice. We couldn't keep the seventeen percent growth, 'cause it was too expensive, we had to settle for the six percent growth and the five hundred and fifty dollars. But, so, what I, what I would do here is work with the cabinet and look, all of the assistant superintendents and directors, as we look at their programming, look at what are we offering? And when I get back to that about implementing and evaluating, we're gonna evaluate, and it doesn't have to be a test score. It can be a graduation rate, it can be, you know, a remedial program we, we use for kids. We had twenty-six kids, we interviewed forty-two kids who failed basically every course in eighth grade. We had twenty-six kids that through that interview process were selected, and we had two teachers that were with them during the first period and two teachers with them. So, we had language arts and math, science and social studies in the afternoon. So, they started with the kids in the morning, we fed them breakfast, we made sure they had all their homework, done everything, then we went through the day, then before they left, they left that program, they would, what was your homework for the day, all those pieces. There's a lot more complexity to what the teachers did there, but it was more expensive, 'cause we were team-teaching in that model, but at the end of the year, we had some transient kids, so we only had twenty-one left, but ninety-seven percent of them passed all their classes. Extremely successful, would be an expensive program, that's something we may wanna keep, because it's a value, it wasn't based on a test score, it was based on did we pass classes or not. But, so what academic return on investment is, is it looks at, what kind of return are we getting, based on what that parameter is we're setting to evaluate it by, and what does that cost per pupil? So, where I'm at now, when I came in, they thought they had to go for an operating referendum. I said, "Let's work this process." We did, like I said, we just, we're in a smaller budget, we just put five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars into a fund balance, where now we're up over eleven percent. We haven't changed our operating, and we still have the fourth-best class size in the metro area. We just had a lot of ancillary things going on, where we weren't achieving, and we had a lot more programming than other schools did. We've been able to clean all those budget issues up, and now we're in good shape, so. That's what I would, that's how I would look at reducing three percent if we had two or six percent, or, I'm gonna look at the budget that way anyway, 'cause I wanna know if we ever get in that situation, what we have to do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And from a time check, we're, we're just about halfway, and we're just through number four, so.
I'll speed up.
You've probably touched on some of the later ones, but I just wanted to give you that, so.
Yep.
Uh, Jackie?
So, what do you believe standardized test scores tell us and don't tell us about a school district? And what are some examples of successful strategies you have implemented to address the achievement gap in your previous roles?
Yep, so I think they're a snapshot in time, they're an important thing to look at, so you can, you can see where you are, they're not an end-all-be-all, you have to use them for what they are. We choose to look at arts, athletics, activity, or academics, so we look at kind of the triple-A piece of it, we want kids involved, because those are the soft skills. Some of the things we've done, so I'll give you an example, we raised our ACT score by one point four points. We increased, we doubled the number of kids who took advanced placement courses, we doubled the number of courses that kids took, and we doubled the number of tests that were administered. So, followed research, put more kids in high-level classes, have them take more high-level courses, administer more high-level tests, kids are gonna perform better. Then, we used Avid to provide support, to get those kids the support they needed, so they could take at least one high-level course. I didn't have IB in that school setting, had I had that, it would have been a nice piece to put kids into some standard-level IB courses, which are a little bit more functional for some kids as well, still high-level rigor, zone-approximal development. The other pieces were right now, we were below the state average in fourteen of seventeen areas in MCA, we're down to six. We anticipate, based on some benchmark scores, we're gonna be down to three areas, our goal is to get all of them above. What we're using right now is Khan Academy, where through the device, at the end of October, kids had to be twenty-five percent. So, if in seventh grade, if you're in seventh grade now, you weren't proficient in sixth grade, you're doing sixth grade in Khan Academy. Self-directed first, if you were twenty-five percent of the way through what you had to, you just keep going. If not, you went into a structured advisory with a math teacher. Now, the second check-in was in January, if they were at that point in, with a structured advisor, they stay in that, if they weren't, they go into a structured study hall. So, it's about creating systemic approaches to looking at it. We think we'll reduce, or we'll move three of our areas this year in math above in MCA, so we'll be down to only three of the seventeen areas that are below the state testing in MCA. So, in talking about achieving the gap, we, in three of the four areas where we had gaps, in my current situation, we've closed that. Because math's a perfect example, if you don't close the gap in math, it builds. So, to just go to seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, why we ever would expect their scores to change, we shouldn't, because you gotta close the skill gap, so.
Thank you.
Okay. What is your experience in planning for a growing district and meeting the programming and facility needs, including the consideration of boundary changes?
Boundary changes. Ben, I've been through all of that, we, it was a part of a district that passed a ninety-seven and a half million-dollar referendum, had to build a, a school on the south side, because a school on the south side because that's where our growth was, really being purposeful, um, and engaging in conversations with your community. You know, one of the conversations we had there that hindsight probably would have been a better solution for us was to actually build a middle school and turn one of the middle schools into an elementary school, have it be a larger facility. Um, cost-wise and long-term sustainability, also location-wise, probably would have been a better, uh, move. So I think it's, one is really about engaging the community in the conversation. Help them understand why you need to make the changes. Be very clear about, about why you're placing the facility in the way that you are. Understand your demographic needs, where is your growth areas, where are your declining areas? Um, the one thing I'll say too is, is when you make those boundary decisions, you have to have had a lot of input and change. And then we have to agree on that when we go to the meeting. Cause I've seen it where we moved a neighborhood, and we had true balance. And by moving one neighborhood, you ended up with a school that had capacity for 750, then ended up with 480. And that, just that one neighborhood change can make a significant issue. Um, so a, a lot of experience in that area in terms of, uh, facility. A, a lot of the ads there were athletic, um, facility ads. Um, and you have to have a really honest conversation with people about why. You know, people last turf fields a lot of times. You can save a lot of money because you're not watering turf fields, you're not mowing turf fields. People don't realize how much it costs to maintain grass fields as well. It's just really about creating clarity for your public and engaging them in conversation. Um, there's a product out there that I think is really great. It's called Thought Exchange. It's the ability for people in the community to just enter their thoughts. And then everybody in the community gets to weigh the thoughts. And there's an analytic tool behind it, because a lot of times in community, everybody thinks that everybody thinks the way you do. And through this process, it allows people to kind of see how the whole community is thinking. Um, I know, uh, North Branch, who had had a very difficult time passing referendums, they actually used that tool and passed one. Um, and it's been used across the country very successfully in a lot of ways. But that's a great way. You have to find that tool to connect feedback from your community. And we talk 21st century, we have to find those kind of tools to bring that to the table. Um, let's see here. Uh, growing, we've had the conversation right now with, uh, all the way we've done advertising, we've sent advertising outside the district, that we've had, had the question about do we drive buses over lines, do we not? You know, that's been issues. There's districts that are doing it, but it's how much do you want to grow and at what rate? As a board, that's something we would have to decide. Is this, is this important to us enough because the resources we get are going to increase our programming, that we want to do this or we don't want to do it? But it's all those kind of conversations that, that we would have to have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
We have about, uh, 15 minutes left and, uh, eight questions. So please describe your past work implementing vocational and other skills-based programs.
Yep, uh, secured $750,000 to build a fabrication lab, worked with, um, individual in Stillwater, gave 250, our, another group matched 250, and then we raised 250 for our gala. So we're, uh, industry standard equipment on industry standard tools. One of the things is, is to run a traditional program and not use the current CAD software doesn't make a lot of sense. We wanted kids to have the CAD experience in school, that they could go to Hayferman Manufacturing and run the same CAD machine on the same software. If that's Inventor, it's Inventor. If it's a different software program, it's a different one, but we wanted to have that. We moved all of our machines to CNC, so we looked at plasma, cutters, lathes, 3D printers, engravers, all of those things. And then the second experience was, was then creating things that we actually kids could sell. Um, you know, creating a manufacturing type, um, operation. Uh, right now, we're actually looking at launching a small gas engines, partly because I can never find anywhere with my lawnmower brakes that I can take it to get fixed. And I've got all these kids who know how to do it. So I was just talking with, uh, this was about a month ago, but we're looking at, we have some kids that have that experience about opening a small manufacturer, or a, a, a small gas engines business that our kids would actually run. Pe- people would be able to drop off their engines, be able to pay to have that, the kids fix it, and those kind of pieces. We're working through that process right now, because it's a great opportunity for kids to learn the business side of it as well. Um, so a lot of experience, um, in that area. And like I said, building a fabrication lab was outstanding. The best hands-on engineering experience in, uh, kids will ever get, we say, but also prepares kids for two years and go right to the workforce.
Thank you.
Discuss a time when you made a decision that you would have now done differently. What would you have done differently? What did you learn?
Um, you know, being of a, boy, this is a tough one, but, uh, you know, be, running a referendum, being part of a group, um, you know, in a situation where we knew we had 1,010 empty seats in the district, and we had to make some, some difficult decisions. We built a school in, in one place, and we knew we were going to have to close some schools in other places. And I, I think we talked about it, but you have to really make sure. It's one thing to talk about it, but it's another thing to make sure that people are listening and that people are hearing you. And I do think that burden of responsibility rests on us, that the public, not only we tell them, um, that we have an opportunity for them to listen, but also that they hear what that is. Because that can be, you, you don't want to, we don't want to do things that can tear our, our system apart and create issues. Cause that can last for 20 years. And that comes down to creating clarity, uh, in our ability to do that. So that would be one where I would just make sure that we were a little clearer about what was going to be the fallout.
Thank you.
Yep.
Please describe strategies that you have used to seek the perspectives of multiple stakeholders. Specifically, address how you did or would ensure that you hear the voices of families of color, English learners, and the LGBTQ community.
Yeah. You know, I, I can't and I never will be able to, um, to be a person of color and understand what that piece is. And, and I, I will fully acknowledge that all of, um, members of all those communities have been marginalized, have been discriminated against, and have been treated unfairly. Um, I walked into a situation in LGBT, uh, that was fairly contentious in, in the community. Uh, and it was really over bathroom use and space. And, um, we had a contingency on one side, and I met with, um, a member of the board, uh, a couple of the ministers in town. Uh, and at the end of the day, we, I think the conversation we had, we came to a resolution where we worked out the bathroom space for, um, that would be available in the school setting. And in the end, it, it had gone from a big issue being in the paper to we haven't heard anything about it since. And I think everyone was respect, felt respected because we heard all of the perceptions. At the end of the day, every decision we make has to come back to what's good for kids, that we create self, our safe and healthy learning environments for kids. The one, the one thing I will say, you know, especially, and this is more working in, um, with students of color and families of color. You know, the elephant in the room is they don't feel comfortable coming into our schools in many ways. Either they had a very negative experience through curriculum that was either implicitly or explicitly biased, or they had a very negative experience through a very punitive discipline system that we've always had. So the one thing I will always promise is I will always listen, I will always seek to understand, and I always work to have a resolution. And the one thing I will say in that is, is when we do that, we're not going to like what we hear. But we're going to have to follow through on some of the things that they want to see done differently, because that's how you build trust. When you have a conversation with people and they tell you this is what we really want, you need to follow through on it, because that's what starts to build those building blocks of trust. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
How have you managed the relationship between the school board and superintendent, and what are the roles of each? What did you like or dislike? Did you make changes in this relationship while in your district?
So I will say this, the, a highly functional school board is extremely important to be, to a district being successful. I've watched districts that have boards that aren't functional, that have great kids and great teachers, and they just never can reach their full potential. So, um, it's kind of a systemic process for me. You know, one of the first things I would do if I came here is build a strong leadership team. Uh, that is really important to me because that goes, flows down into the work that's happening at the classroom level, and it flows up to what happens in the board. And, and how that works for me is my leadership team really, um, we work through and address all of the areas that are going on in curriculum, instruction, technology, operations. And every week, I send the board an update around what those areas are. And that helps those priorities formulate what our work sessions will become. And that's when we do the work. And then from there, we talk about all the work that's going on. It gives the board opportunity to ask questions. I get answers, because I don't have all the answers right away. Um, we'll come in, have those at the work session. Then there's typically two weeks before we go to our board meeting where they have the opportunity to ask questions as well. And really what I see our board meeting as, is the opportunity to talk about the work we did in the work session, to talk about the information we've collected, the, the critical questions we've asked. Because one problem people have is they always ask, why do you have all these positions in the district? That's an opportunity for us in a business meeting, for the public to see, what are our assistant superintendents doing? What are our directors doing? What is a result of the work that's happening? That's really what the business meeting should be for us, is an opportunity to showcase all of that work that's happening. So that's why that, that cabinet leadership team is so important, and then the teams they build underneath that, but also the relationship and team then that the board has with the superintendent. Um, that's one side of it, just a nutshell kind of of that. The other piece to me is people always talk about how lonely the superintendent job is. And I haven't felt that, because I have great relationships with my board members. Um, you might like this or not, but I spend a lot of time talking to my board members on the phone. Um, I spend a lot of, you know, and, and I actually even encourage them. You know, we talk a lot about governance, but when somebody asks a tough question like, well, the football team has always sold cookie dough, and now the basketball team is, and I don't want them to, I'm okay if you ask me that question. Like, I want to go and ask the question around. I would rather, because what I've come to learn is people try so hard sometimes to honor that governance thing, that Tanya's going to get asked a question, she's going to get asked another question. Pretty soon, she's going to be frustrated, because, well, it's governance, I can't ask it. I'd rather have you ask it. Like, let's have the conversation. Let me get some information. I might not get an answer, but let's, I, I want to at least have those lines of communication. Um, I have four board members who have gone off for a variety of reasons. I still have lunch with them and, and connect with them. And, and I see them being in, uh, part of my life and someone I talk to for, for the rest of my life. And that's what I think has not made the job lonely for me. Cause I have, and I think that personal relationship piece is huge. I always say our strengths, um, are what attract us to each other, but our, our weaknesses are what allow us to make connections. And that's the part where if we don't get to that point of those weaknesses, we're not going to connect and do the hard things that have to be done for kids, so.
Thank you. How do you ensure that a district recruits, hires, and motivates the finest educators? How do you recruit employees of colors and employees who are racially conscious for all positions in the district?
Most important thing we have, toughest part of the job is when you have to make changes. Um, you know, I will say, sitting in this chair, sitting in the principal chair, um, I've had to relieve staff of their, their jobs. I say, I'll always work with somebody until they're not reflective, and then you need to make a change. But we have to put the best educators in front of our kids. We know that the quality of the teacher is the single most important thing that leads to student achievement. On the side of recruiting, um, quality instructors, you know, I, I talk a lot about Grow Your Own, but to me, the Grow Your Own program, if it's going to be successful, has to be something where I envisioned as we form a partnership with a college or a university, and we put a campus onsite in one of our schools. We work with them to be able to, and we set a goal. If we want 18 teachers in four years, then let's start in their junior year and provide them a college experience with that college that's at their high school, and have them do their first two years there. We can hire them as paraprofessionals. They can do their practicums and student teaching experience. We have a teacher cadet program in the district I'm in right now, which has been fabulous. Um, but then also, um, saying if we want 18, let's go out and actively recruit 18 teach, kids of color we think would be good teachers. And then when they're 20 and they finish, because we did PSCO for two years, let's hire them. You know, we know we're going to have a need. I, I listened to Ed Graff talk the other day. Uh, he could hire all of those and all of the, he doesn't have enough teachers coming, period, to fill all of his positions in Minneapolis. So Grow Your Own, I, I get, I get back to the planning, piloting, implementing, and evaluating. People will talk a lot about Grow Your Own. I don't hear a lot where we have a lot of, we're producing large mass amounts of, of teachers of color, or what are we really doing to, to really push them? Education's a great job. How can we encourage some of these kids? Cause some of these kids don't even know the possibilities there. I think putting it in our school or on our campus would be a huge step in, in that recruitment process for kids, so.
Thank you. How would you handle decisions that are unpopular with the public, but educationally and are financially necessary? Please give an example.
Anytime you have to make reductions or, or change programs, uh, that's, that can be the issue. I think clear transparency is huge. I think communication. I think being willing, again, to, to listen and seek understanding. And then being very clear with what the decision-making process was. Why did we do this? We talk about academic return on investment. It's costing us this, this is what we have. You know, establishing for people, uh, you know, when we cut $10 million and it class sizes are 40 at the secondary, our teachers were well aware that, um, we had the highest contract in the state at that time between salary and benefits. Based on what our contract was with where our referendum was, this is what was going to have to happen. Now, that did ultimately lead to passing an operating referendum to lower class size. It generated more revenue in that sense, but it, it allowed us to have that conversation with the community. We, none of us liked the class sizes we had, but we also couldn't get an operating referendum. Well, the class sizes got to that point, then we got the operating referendum and were able to support that. Um, so I think it's, it's just, it's really about clear, clarity, communication, um, and understanding really why you're doing what you're doing. Uh, and at the end of the day, it has to be about kids. All the decisions we make have to be about what's in the best interest of kids. And as long as the public sees that, um, I, they're, I'm not going to say they're going to support you 100%, but they're going to support the fact that, that, if they see that over time, that it's always about kids, that, that, that's where your decision-making process was, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a few minutes left, and we're caught up. So, uh, please explain.
I'm trying.
So please explain how you would go about setting a strategy to capture a higher percentage of eligible students who live in our district, but do not currently attend District 279 schools?
Yeah, you know, this gets back, going back to what's best for kids too. I, I think what we have to do is, we have to explore. So all the kids that leave our district now, we actually call them. And I understand scale-wise, it's a different thing, but we have to have a method to reach out to our kids who are making different choices. Cause you want to talk about planning and what we should be doing. Um, you know, we had kids leaving because supposedly a school had smaller class sizes and better reading program. Well, they didn't have smaller class sizes, and their reading test scores, one indicator, were worse than ours. But this charter school had clearly communicated with people that they offered better than we did. And when we had the conversation, you know, always from a respectful point, you know, we would call and our message, we have a very careful message. We're just seeking to understand why you made a decision, not trying to tell you to come back. We want to learn and grow as a district to figure out what kind of programming we can do, so that maybe you'll choose to come back, or another kid would choose to stay here as a result of it. So, um, you know, getting back to what I talked about Thought Exchange, the idea of opening that up and allowing people to communicate through a technology tool like a blog, is, is help understand. And I'll also say this, there's certain things that we can't offer that people will make a choice. People will make choices for religious reasons and other things to send their kids to school, and I respect that. Um, I will also, uh, one of the things, we, we started an online program. Uh, we have 92 kids who are taking online classes right now. You know, I talked to a couple homeschool parents, and they want their kids to do band inquire. That's great. We'll bring them in for band inquire. I respect their choice to do homeschool. I just talked to a parent the other day who was doing band inquire, and she's now going to do algebra because she doesn't feel comfortable teaching that. So, so if you meet them where they are and treat them respectfully, and understand that some of these choices are made for reasons that we can't provide, um, but I do think it's extremely important for us to understand, why are people making these choices? How does that help us change what we're doing?
All right, thank you. And I'll, and with the last one also, is there anything else that you would like for us to know about you as we consider your candidacy for the superintendent of Osseo area schools?
I always want to come back to this question tomorrow, because I'll beat myself up for the next 24 hours about everything I said wrong, or I didn't say right, or I didn't talk about. But, um, no, I just, I really just want to leave you with, uh, I'm extremely excited. Um, I've been a part of this area, uh, for a long time in my life, and, uh, I just, I think the communities that are served here are great. I think the potential is great. Um, I have a strong understanding of the district. Um, you know, a well-established group on the east side of this, of the district, a well-established group on the west side of the district. And, um, the opportunity to come in and serve. And, you know, as I've said, if you all leave as board members, or I retire when my career's over, um, you know, the thing that I would be most proud of is that people were visiting our district uh, to figure out, what have we done to opera, offer opportunity for kids of color to excel, to enter industry, to pursue careers that they never would have thought about pursuing? Um, how do we create those connections within industry? Cause it's one piece to me, as I said earlier, about, we can make the test scores be equal, but there's still an opportunity gap in industry. I just read an article in the Wall Street Journal yesterday that, uh, African-Americans and white, uh, individuals with MBAs, African-Americans make 24% less in the same job. That's not right. But part of it is our ability to get kids of color out into the business and the workforce and see all of the opportunities, the potential, the ideas that they can provide will help set them up to get jobs. Because that's what a lot of kids, white kids have the opportunity to do now through internships and experiences